Meeting for October second, two thousand twenty-five, and I'll do the roll call vote to start with.
Here.
Here. Here. Alright, well, we're good there, so we're gonna move to the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you, moving on to item number four, which is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda, so looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Alright, we have people that are not here, but all voting members are here, so we'll just do it. I or nae, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Anyone abstain? The agenda and gen- uh, consent agenda passes. Moving on to item number five, reports from organizations, we get a fun one here, we are going to be starting out with the PACT Student Council Representative Caleb and Violet. Rock over, welcome. Come on up and grab a seat.
And with our student council representatives, I'd like to introduce to the board our new social worker at Cora General and Population, Ms. Ashley Solheim, who is overseeing our student council this year as their advisor, and she's going to introduce them and speak to their work as well.
Great, thank you.
Hello, everyone, um, my name's Ashley Solheim, and I'm the general education social worker at the elementary campus. Um, I recently received my Master of Social Work degree last spring from Bethel, so I'm super excited to be here at PACT. Um, I've experienced working in the Spring Lake Park District and the Monsey District as well, but I'm so thankful for the opportunity to be working at PACT, and I am sure my knowledge from those experiences will carry over to PACT very well and, um, lead to a wonderful year ahead. And then, um, I am super grateful for all the welcome, um, support that I've received from staff, from students, from parents. They've already all made me feel right at home, and I am super excited for the opportunity to facilitate student council as well, and I hope to build off the, all the amazing things that this group has already done, and then also support in implementing new ideas for the future as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to the experts of student council, Caleb and Violet.
Good evening, PACT School Board members and guests. My name is Violet, and I am in fourth grade. We are so excited to have an opportunity to share some of our plans for the elementary student council this year.
Hi, my name is Caleb, and I am in fifth grade, I would like to start off by reading the speech I shared with my class to earn the role of student council representative. Thank you for coming to my presentation, first of all, I just wanna say, I really hope I can make these school lunches better. Also, I know, I love student councils, even though I've never been one. This is a chance to make the school a better place than it already is. When you walk in with a frown on your face, I want you to walk in with a smile. This is the last year in elementary, so I wanna make it the best. I want you and you and even you to go to school excited to learn. I want the students and the teachers to have the best year possible, so please vote for me.
We are so excited to be part of the student council for this year. I would like to share some of our plans that we are very excited to do. During our first meeting on Monday, we created a get to know me posters and are hung up on a bulletin board, so other students within the school know who the student council representatives are. A couple of fun facts about us, and who we get to go to if they have a, an idea or a question about what student council does. We are also planned, uh, we also planned Spirit Week themes for upcoming event, uh, week in October. We voted on a one to make it there for everyone. Spirit weeks are great because the classmates get an extra excited for the weekend ahead, since they get to wear fun outfits and see their friends dressed up too. I really like the theme Sucker Mom and Barbecue Dad.
My, my favorite theme is Wacky Wednesday.
Starting next month, we are going to be collecting donations for the families in need. We know that some families do not have as much as others, we want to give it back and help those within the school community. It does not feel like it now, but since our cool moms are right around the corner, we hope to receive donations of coats, snow pants, boots, and hats, and robes. A donation venue will be placed in the front of, uh, in the front office for these items.
We also plan to do an additional service project such as creating tie blankets for the local hospital to bring some comfort for the children in need. We also will be collecting donations to give to an animal shelter, which I am excited to do. We are really excited for the year ahead, where we are going to make a positive impact within our school and our community.
Thank you so much for listening to us share about all these things we are planning to do at PACT Student Council.
Well, if you guys wanna take over for Ann and myself, I'm ready to have you sit in, thank you. That's awesome, good job, guys. Alright, moving on to, um, item number six, which is recognitions and retirements, Dr. Plank.
Uh, I'm gonna ask Kaylee Braise to come join me up front for a moment. I'll let you hold this while I get to read the concept. School Board of Directors, it is my distinct pleasure to present Ms. Kaylee Braise, fifth grade teacher, as the October twenty twenty-five Employee of the Month. Ms. Braise works joyfully and selfishly, selfishly, if I can get my words correctly, to support students, families, and colleagues at the elementary campus. We are beyond grateful and thankful for the efforts she puts forth to develop her students' independence, responsibility, sense of belonging, and academic success. Ms. Braise is a, is a leader, she serves as a fifth grade representative of PACT's building instructional leadership team, and recently volunteered to also serve on PACT's building and operation committee, so built in by. These efforts showcase her commitment to PACT's teaching and learning initiatives as well as the day-to-day operations. The PACT staff have expressed the following of Ms. Braise. Students absolutely adore her, and it's clear why. She brings warmth, patience, and a deep sense of care into everything she does. Mr. Mochill, a third teacher. It's clear that she has intentionally created a space where students feel safe, are excited to learn, and know how to work together in small groups on tasks that are just right for them. She exudes joy with her genuine smile, care for others, and enthusiasm to see the best in everyone. Teresa White. Her ability to see people and help meet their needs is uncanny to me. She is generous with both her time and resources. She can be quoted for saying to those who work with her, "What's mine is worse." This statement displays not only her generosity, but also the depth of her kindness and heart to see the people around her succeed and thrive. And, a third teacher. She approaches every situation with positivity and a smile that brightens the day of everyone around her. She often seeks out feedback and collaboration, modeling what it means to be a lifelong learner and a full player. Janelle Moore. In summary, Ms. Braise is an asset to our organization, her commitment to PACT shines through daily. Please join me in congratulating Kaylee as our October twenty twenty-five Employee of the Month.
Do you have any words to put down?
My team is great. My team is best, yeah.
Well, thank you. Alright, um, two good things in a row, let's go three for three, and go to item number seven, Teaching and Learning. PACT Spotlight Presentation, Second Grade Board Meeting, all second grade teachers.
You're always a special story, and I'm happy for you.
Sometimes we do.
Thanks for having us, everyone, we're so excited to share our first month of second grade. It's been such a good month so far, so we're really excited for this year. I'm Elise House, Miranda Bartow, Miss Peter's friend.
I'm Kayla Kennedy.
I'm Ruth Pennants.
Taylor Harriay.
Alright, so in our first month of school, second grade had some special leaders, we had children, teachers, department, and school. A couple weeks ago, so these are some pictures from each of our classrooms. We had an officer in every room, um, and spending some time in the morning, reading a story to our students, um, sharing about what they do in our community, and answering any questions that they had. They had lots of questions, um, and what kind of inspired the secondary team bringing in the Randy Pies Department was, we got together at the beginning of the school year, and we were very encouraged and excited about all of our, or our reading that we've done over the summer, meeting our summer reading goal, meeting and exceeding our summer reading goal. And we just wanted to continue that excitement for reading, and we figured bringing in some special guests and commensary readers was a great opportunity for that. Um, there's something special about someone sharing their favorite story, and, um, when I share stories with my students, it's always the first one that they grab and put in their book bin and read later in the day. So we figured bringing in some special guests and having them share some stories, which is to continue that excitement as well. So we also wanted to be really intentional with the community members that we're partnering with, and with our officers on the school through these, we figured, and our personal connections that we have, um, our family connection with the community related to Randy Pies Department was a great, so was a great start. We also had our celebration of reading, so this photo and that photo are, um, our wonderful celebration of reading that we had a couple weeks ago. Um, our students were so excited, walking over to the draw with their books and seeing these officers, um, kind of greeting them and welcoming them to the draw. A lot of my students recognized right away the officer that was in our classroom, and so it was just so fun for them to have that connection, and very good that.
Yeah, so in our class, they came in, they read this story, Officer Buckle, Gloria.
Which is just a fun story about a police officer who goes from school to school, and at first the kids are kind of bored with the message, until later on a dog named Gloria comes in, and as the police officer is telling them these safety tips, Gloria's in the background acting out the safety tips in a fun way, and then the kids just love it, and they become a team together, Officer Buckle and Gloria. So the police officers came in and they read that story, and one personal connection I have is that my dad, who works at the Champlin Police Department, came in, so there's a picture of us right there, and the kids just absolutely loved it when they found out that that was my dad. Um, so yeah, the police officers came in, and they helped them brainstorm ideas for their favorite safety tips, and then they got to draw in the star of their favorite safety tip and draw a picture of what that looks like. And then, like we're said, they got to ask them a bunch of questions, which was just so much fun getting to learn about what the police officers do. And then later on, we had them write thank you letters to the police officers, so they wrote those, and we dropped them off, and I even took a picture of my dad holding out their thank you letters, and I showed that to them, so they loved that. Yeah, it was just a really awesome way to bring the community, bring in those personal connections, and just in a really meaningful way, and it just shows how we can combine the academic and the character development in a meaningful way.
Well, now my part is the fun part, so tying into what Ms. Kennedy was talking about, um, we really like ways to be able to include our community and our PACT community, our family communities, and what better way, what goes with the police department is also the fire department. Um, so fun enough, my dad is the fire chief over at Anover Champlin, and he actually gets to come to our classrooms tomorrow, and October is Fire Safety Prevention Month, and so he gets to come in, and we're reading our favorite book, Sprinkles, which is about the fire dog. And so he'll give us some safety tips of how we can be safer in our homes and in our communities that way, and learning all about those different things, about what is, what does the police officer do, and how do they work with firefighters, and what does a firefighter do? Um, and also how does, uh, chief look different than a firefighter, and all those fun things. So they'll be bringing in some fire gear for them to kind of check out, hopefully to alleviate some of that fear, you know? Some kids, they see all the gear, and they go, what is all of that? That can be scary. And so try and take away that fear, and really encourage the learning and the knowledge of where to start with. So then on the right is my dad, Dr. Harriay, like I said, he'll be coming around to some of our classrooms tomorrow.
Yeah, and then PACT is a big family community, so I have a connection to Annie West, which is a PACT parent. Um, she is with Anover Fire Department, and I taught her, well, this daughter, a couple years ago, and she came, and she showed all the gear, just like Taylor was saying, and they loved that, so I have her youngest daughter this year, and so I get to sort of talk to her and show that community that way too. So we have two police, or two fire officers coming tomorrow, so we're very excited about that. We're also excited to just, um, stem from next and have more children who love us.
Awesome. Alright. See here, on to, uh, item number seven B, Teaching and Learning Report, uh, School Board Teaching and Learning Updates.
Alright, tough act to follow here, but, um, have several things to celebrate as well, so thank you for being here tonight. Um, in September, the Teaching and Learning Department, um, was recognized by, um, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and awarded Title III federal funds. Now, these Title III federal funds are allowing us to specifically support our EL teachers, students, and families, as well as the EL programming. These funds must be spent in three different categories, including teacher professional development, family literacy and engagement, and supplemental materials to support the EL programming. So PACT Charter School will be sending our EL teachers to the Minnesota TESO Conference in November, as well as funding two advanced educational courses through the Bureau of Education and Research. Uh, we are also in the midst of planning our EL Family Literacy and Engagement Meeting on December second. We also have a new partnership with the Anoka Rum River Library, um, and they would, um, they are planning to attend our EL Family Night as well to support us with different ways that families can support their child's literacy development. Um, we are also going to be showcasing how important it is that we value our connection with families, providing other ideas of how they can support their child at home, as well as, um, sharing progress about their child's English proficiency. Um, and we're working with our EL teachers to select supplementary curriculum materials to support the EL programming at the secondary campus as well. As you heard during the working session, the curriculum review teams have begun for both social studies and health. We have completed our Phase One, so our first initial meeting of the process, where we created a vision, a belief statement for each of the content areas, we unpacked the new Minnesota State Standards, and conducted a SWOT analysis of our current programming. For those of you who may not be familiar, a SWOT analysis is where we take a look at our current curriculum, and we say, what are its strengths? What are its weaknesses? Where do we see opportunities for improvement? And what are some barriers or threats, um, that need to be considered as we move into Phase Two? Before I explain Phase Two, I just want to publicly recognize all of the teachers and parents who are serving on these teams. They are dedicating significant time to this process, um, giving up their family time and their, um, days on non-school Fridays. So for social studies, we have Mackenzie Darula, Jack Washburn, Nancy Singer, Jolene Taylor, Jason Tossi, Miranda Bartel, Mikale Dahl, and Jared Barsness. For health, we have Amy Morgan, Josh Moschel, Sharon Churchill, Anne Ostendorf, Bennett Olson, and Jennifer Moss. And I am doing my absolute best, um, to ensure that there is that balance between teachers and parents on each committee. For Phase Two, which is happening in November, our focus will be to develop curriculum criteria rubrics based on the state standards and what we know to be best practices. We will determine curriculum programs to be reviewed, um, selecting the top three curricular resources to be reviewed against these rubrics, and know that one of those three will include the current, um, curriculum that we are using, just their updated version of such. And then we will be contacting vendors for those samples to then review during our Phase Three meeting. Alright, as your literacy lead, a few things to update you on. Both, um, myself and Ms. Moen attended a two-day training at Brightworks on the science of reading. This Train the Trainer session equipped us with the professional development resources to use K-12 with our teachers and parent professionals. There are four different sessions that we have materials for that will be used in future PD sessions here at PACT, as we support our literacy development. The Reading Interventionist Team is also working to define criteria for Tier III academic support, meaning how do our students qualify for this intensive support? How are multiple data points looked at, including Fastbridge Core Literacy Assessment, Haggerty Assessments, and MCA Data? And once they do qualify for Tier III support, how is their academic progress monitored? And when students show that they are reaching grade level expectations, the process for exiting this intensive literacy support. That's all in process. Our Instructional Cabinet Team has been involved in learning and implementing our MTSS structure and support, as well as the 5D and 5D Plus framework. Last month, we collaborated with David Bernard, our Brightworks consultant, in defining what is Tier One instruction here at PACT. We have taken that definition to the BUILT teams at both elementary and secondary campuses, and we'll be bringing that feedback from BUILT back to our ICAB team to further refine that definition before bringing it back to the entire staff on October twenty-fourth. Um, we will also be training on October twenty-fourth on the 5D, uh, 5D Plus rubric that we are using for appraisals, not evaluations, um, of our staff, as we are really focusing on that goal-setting growth mindset, really providing, um, feedback that is timely and impactful for not only the teacher, but the student experience as well. So just a lot of learning and a lot of professional development and planning going on.
Awesome, any questions? Dr. Flansberg.
I would just love to be able to expand upon the conversation around the 5D Plus in particular, when we're talking about the difference between appraisal and evaluation. Uh, I, I think historically, you know, the teacher evaluation systems were set up is exactly that, is that it's kind of a pass-fail mindset. The shift with the 5D Plus is really to focus on a continuous improvement model and feedback loops, not based on opinion, but observable fact. And so being able to look very clearly and articulate, I notice, and coming up with wondering questions, and principals are being guided to, yeah, establish questions that are legitimate questions, not something that they're trying to guide the teacher to. But we, we wanna be able to create reflective practitioners in all that we're doing. So when we think about teacher preparation programs at our universities, that's one of the biggest and heaviest components that they focus on in those programs is become a reflective practitioner. But it's also one of the easiest to lose when you actually move into the profession, because you're so busy with the day-to-day operations. So it's taking that and bringing it back and saying, listen, we wanna help develop our young staff, and sometimes feedback can be awkward, it can feel hard, and, and learning what that is, but our principals are getting into the classrooms on a regular basis to be able to see what is taking place, and creating conversations, and creating, uh, opportunities for reflective thought, and saying, what's going well, and what can I get better at? The same thing that we're asking our students to do is the same thing that we're asking our staff to do. And it's never intended to be a got you, it's never intended, I know that I had heard past practice had been about decimal point systems, and, oh, if I don't make this number, I'm not going to, um, be successful, or, no, we're, we're focused, i- if teachers are struggling, we're gonna have honest conversations about that. If teachers are doing well, we're gonna build upon the good things that are happening in the classroom. So we wanna be able to help support teachers i- in a really proactive, positive, healthy way, and build partnerships between administration and teachers to improve instruction, because at the end of the day, when we partner well, and when we do that exceptionally well, tho- those will benefit our students, and that's why we exist, so, just to expand.
Awesome. Anything else? Thank you, that was great. Good on that one. Um, next we have the, uh, DAC Board Report for October.
Correct, on September eleventh, we have a robust three-hour meeting, um, where the DAC team members provided feedback on items to include on the district teaching and learning website, not only at the district level, but the elementary campus, secondary campus sites as well, which are all under development. The PACT professional development highlights and workshop reflections were shared. DAC reviewed our year-long professional development plan, which was submitted to VOA. Dr. Flansberg and I presented our district data review of our Fastbridge MCA ATT and graduation rate data reflective of the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, this is in alignment with our shared commitment to collective efficacy and continuous improvement. Each data set was thoughtfully aligned with the district-wide goals that are established for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And again, much of this data report will be shared with you next month in our, um, CACI report. Dr. Bronson and Ms. Bondy shared an MDE-approved Empower Me curriculum for K-12 students. This resource addresses Aaron's Law, found in the Minnesota statute, which really pertains to personal body safety for children, and these lessons are currently going to be piloted in our K-five classrooms for this year, with the district-wide implementation possible for the two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Dr. Flansberg and I also presented policies for feedback, including the policies that you see listed there, six twenty-five, six twenty-six, six twenty-seven, and six twenty-eight, which will be later discussed in this meeting. And then I shared the Title I Family Engagement Plan and the PACT School Compact for Learning, um, just to get one more set of feedback before, um, you approved it tonight during the consent agenda. And then we shared about the Curriculum Review Team timelines, um, as well as the feedback loops that will occur at the DAC Board Meeting in November, and then coming here to the Board as well, um, probably in December. The math team will then have a feedback loop starting in January. And then we just highlighted some additional volunteer opportunities that are available at the PACT Elementary Campus specific at the Media Center. So if anyone would like to spread the word, she would gladly accept volunteers. That concludes our report.
Awesome, any, Dr. Flansberg?
Just a quick question, Ms. Wyden, um, can you remind me, Empower Me, that was, um, developed by the JWRC, the Jacob Wetterling Research Center, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, so it's, I think it's important for the Board to know, when we're looking at the adoption of it, it really is focused on healthy boundaries, and when kids know and understand that something doesn't feel right, being able to give them the necessary tools to be able to go talk to adults and find those individuals. If, uh, it, it really is about protecting themselves, so it's a good resource, it's a very good resource.
Awesome. Anything else? Uh, thank you. Alright, moving to item number eight, Administrative Reports and Recommendations. Superintendent Report.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. Presented before you are, uh, four different policies and the Alternative Learning Plan Form. We've had extensive conversation on these, uh, policies, uh, both at DAC, at previous board meetings and work sessions, and then earlier this evening, even reviewing the updates on Policy six twenty-five, the instructional material review selection and use. Uh, presented before you are all policies, uh, the motion would be, uh, to, and recommendation would be to motion to accept policies as presented.
Alright, any questions before we look for a motion? I'll look for a motion. Alright, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second, alright, the motion is second, any? Any, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. If they're gonna oppose. Anyone abstain? The motion carries. Moving on to item eight B, Human Resources and Operations.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Heineman, I'm going to be presenting on behalf of Ms. Peters, who is unable to be here this evening. There are two proposed fees, um, that we weren't able to access or add to last month's fees, middle school dance team, and the community ed dome ball. So, uh, one is a winter season for middle school dance, and dome ball is January through March.
Uh, the rationale, uh, i-is there for that as well. Uh, and then proposed pay for the Science Olympiad coach, Science Olympiad, we have not had that, and we are adding that in this year for the first time. Again, when we talk about what do we aspire to be for a high-performing school district, making sure that we're putting together high-performing opportunities for our students to access. So, we're very excited to be able to offer Science Olympiad moving forward. So, there's the pay amount of, um, seventeen hundred dollars for the year. And then proposed pay adjustment, uh, we are struggling to find site supervisors with the initially recommended twenty-five dollars a game. We're asking the Board to consider a new rate of forty dollars a game for the soccer games. And those would be the three presentations, all within one Board memo regarding fees. So, you've been, uh, the recommendation would be to, uh, to approve all fees as proposed within the Board memo.
Before we entertain that, what is dome ball?
It basically sounds like indoor softball.
Indoor softball, okay.
I'll, I'll look over to Dr. Losi, do you know what dome ball is?
Um, I think it's the baseball players on the court. From what I'm seeing, I don't know.
Dome ball?
Dome ball. Well, it's gonna be amazing.
I think essentially in Minnesota it allows you to play baseball more than tennis.
Sure.
And that's what it means.
Smaller field.
Yeah.
All right. It said that, right? Dome ball has historically, historically been offered.
Well, we're, we're learning something along the way, aren't we?
Is this a dome ball conspiracy that's?
I, I, I can't say that I observed dome ball at all last year, um, because it's in community ed, it could have been part of the activities, uh, but I'm not aware of it. So, I don't know what the background is.
Dome ball gates. Okay, well, I'm sure it's gonna be great, so.
It will be amazing.
I have full faith that. No, I was just making a comment. But before we ask for a vote, are there any other questions? Mr. Luther.
Is this going forward for the proposed adjustments? Because I thought we would have much home soccer.
Uh, yes, it'd be for going forward for anything else that we would have. And?
There is another one tomorrow, too.
So.
There's still a few soccer games left home.
Home game?
For sure one tomorrow.
Different calendar that I'm on now, sorry.
Uh, yeah.
Is this only for sites to be used this topic or is it for other activities and sports too?
No, because I think we had talked about others, uh, some of the other ones that we had approved previously, such as volleyball, were okay. I think it was, I do believe it was soccer because the games are longer and they're struggling to find people who will stay for that length of time, I believe was the comment. Uh, and, and it's, you know, as we're getting and onboarding our new AD and our new community ed, um, team, uh, and going through that process, it's also helping recognize fees need to be approved by the Board and without calling emergency sessions. We're just, we'll, we'll learn to get ahead of it, I think, in the future, but some of the adjustments are just trying to figure out what's right and what's, where, where's that sweet spot that we can fill? Thank you. We would recommend that be 25, 26. Yes, we would like to, we're gonna compete against, uh, end of season.
So, the, would the recommendation be the same with the addition of, with, uh, adjustments to the school year?
Yes.
Any other discussion or do I have a motion? I get a motion. Do you want to add, uh?
Calendar.
Second, about the adjustment, okay. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Anyone abstain from the vote? The motion carries. Moving on to, where did I lost myself here? Moving on to Human Resources and Operations Report.
I'll just, again, provide a high flyover on behalf of Ms. Peters, just recognizing we've got, um, activities, winter activities have started up. Will be starting up, um, the meeting is scheduled for, uh, this coming Monday. Uh, Booster Club is partnering and working and trying to, uh, build a presentation for home furniture. They're continuing to work towards the development and purchase and build of a press box, uh, for our Panther Stadium. Continuing to expand club offerings at the secondary level and some new ones at the elementary. And, uh, notable improvement in the middle school athletic performance year over year. I would not be able to say what that improvement was without Tracy being here to speak to it. And adding a new middle school winter activity dance team, which is very fun. Uh, Parent Square integration, some of, uh, IT pieces. We, there had been a longstanding issue with, uh, staff who were trying to access Parent Square as a staff, as a parent. And it was tying to their staff email. Um, Chu was able to write a new script that my understanding, after he worked and shared it with Parent Square. Parent Square said, can we adopt this script and actually push it out to all of our other schools that use Parent Square? Because this is a fix for us that we've been struggling with. So, he basically helped fix their issue, um, here at PACT. And so, he's not yet to leave earlier. I would like, yeah, I'd like it free for him moving forward. Um, server backups, uh, he's continuing to make that transition. But again, i-it is, uh, getting close to completing with backup. We now have, uh, the MIIC integration. This is the Minnesota Immunization and Information Connection, which allows us to download, uh, all of students' immunizations directly from the, the cloud. Uh, so we know who's, and we can keep all of their immunizations, uh, on record here. Uh, it's, uh, school districts all have access to that ability. Accounting and Finance, um, we continue to collaborate with Edfin Minnesota. And we're continuing to work on standardizing more and more processes with Edfin Minnesota. I think it's important to be able to talk about the budget last year, remember? We described it a little bit as flying blind because we needed to really rebuild the budget. Bridget created that initial budget for us that we passed this year. And as we go through, now we're continuing to add and work on all those specific numbers in the budget, such as, this is gonna be the elementary supply budget. This is gonna be the secondary supply budget. Now, we need to figure out the capital outlay budgets, which is for, uh, furniture purchases. We need to figure out exactly how much money we are dedicating to professional development and curriculum and instruction purchases. So, this year becomes that baseline year. And as we establish that and we see what those fees are, it'll help us moving forward with the expanded size. So, there's some continued work through that process, but we're getting there. Uh, Chris is continuing, Oles is continuing to partner, uh, with HR. And, uh, I, I walked into her office earlier today and her eyes were cross-eyed and buggy. And she said, I've been looking at the screen far too long, trying to fix some spreadsheets, um, or, or create many, many spreadsheets for HR to be able to use and function. Uh, we had the fire marshal inspection on the elementary campus and they were only finer suggestions that they needed to be able to have fixed, including moving where the current lost and found is. So, not sure where we're gonna move it to, but they said it was a combustible fire hazard. So, um.
With those kids, I think he's right.
Yeah, so what we would like is all students to make sure you're pleased bringing home your items every single night and don't leave them at school. That would fix that problem automatically. Uh, and then we did have to add that last bus route and we've had some issues with transportation. I know there were some parents ex-experiencing significant frustration with the amount of time it was taking for them to, uh, get their students home at the beginning of the year. And I think a, a big reminder is, if you've been on bunker lately, Bunker Lake Boulevard, um, it, what can you, what used to take fifteen minutes can now take forty. And depending upon what time you're hitting it and our buses are going right at that sweet spot of when it's getting really, really busy on that road. Uh, my understanding is that construction should be done by the middle of October. And that should help dramatically, uh, get some students home in a more reasonable time. So, if you had questions, um, I would say we'll wait for Tracy to come next time and she'll be able to answer them proficiently.
All right. Thanks for covering down on that. Next, we have Elementary Board Report. Dr. Bronson. You had walking music.
I know. My new theme song. All right, well, I do, uh, wanna just start this report by just saying how proud I am of the reports you've already heard represented by our elementary team. So, our Student Council members, they're off to such a great start. Um, Ms. Solheim has been a phenomenal addition to our team as our new social worker for our general ed students. And, um, Ms. Braise, of course, I just couldn't say more, more wonderful things about her and the entire fifth-grade team. So, um, things are, things are good and it's a, it's a beautiful, uh, place to be and see so much potential and growth and, uh, expertise all merged and all on the, the journey of student growth and partnership with families. So, I have lots to report on, on, and all of those topics. So, you, you heard our second-grade team who als Also, I just have to give such a shout-out, too. They did a phenomenal job in their presentation. Um, they, they mentioned our reading celebration day, which was a, a, actually last Monday. And it was, it was a beautiful day. The, the weather turned out beautiful for us to be able to walk to such a picturesque spot as the draw where, with amphitheater seating where kids can spread out, enjoy nature. They were all proudly holding books and they couldn't wait to meet with their buddy classmates, either as the older representative to read to the younger one or the younger one to look up and be read to by the, by their older buddy, um, their class buddy. That was just, it was just a beautiful, beautiful day. And to have our Ramsey County, uh, or Ramsey, uh, City of Ramsey police officers there was, was just a joy. And they actually helped us cross the road and gave hi-five. So, they were providing the safety piece that we needed to be in such a, a, a public space, as well as then sitting down and reading with us. And what a, what a joy. So, the, the event ended with an A to Z scavenger hunt around the park. And then, uh, we safely walked back and I hope that we can enjoy that, um, and, and have it be a new tradition at PACT in years to come. So, let's see, um, I do wanna do, uh, do a mention of our activity with the PTO, as I often do. We are so thankful for the dinners they provided for our, for those conference days that were very long, that, that breath of, of fresh air of coming down to the lounge, getting some, some food that they didn't, the teachers didn't have to prepare. So, we're so thankful for the PTO and we are looking forward to partnering with them as we raise funds for our cash calendar. Uh, that's the big fundraiser of the year because the PTO does so much with providing resources to our teachers and prizes for the kids. So, it's, it's a lot of fun and I know that families, that the students have already been telling me how much money they're raising. So, um, so we're thankful for the, for our partnership with PTO. Um, I'm happy to report for all, for our two evenings of conferences, uh, we had a ninety-seven percent rate of families attend. And that is just incredible. Even, um, so, it, what a great turnout and a, a opportunity for us to continue to build partnerships and have that two-way communication and learn from our parents, as well as us giving the information that we have seen about their students in the school. Even our academic interventionists, who aren't homeroom teachers, they called the families that they serve. And, and they, um, one of them told me, Lara, I've never done this before, but I, I had more families come to my door to ask about what I'm doing at the intervention level, um, on top of what is happening in the homeroom level. So, that's, that's really exciting as well. So, um, we, we love, we love our conference nights. Uh, our, my next item is to mention our student learning goals, our SLGs. Last year, PACT kept the tradition going of writing goals based on proficiency of their class data. And this year, we're looking at it at a much more individualized growth rate instead of proficiency. So, looking at every student's scores as they came in with our fast, with our fall assessment data, FastBridge and other, other pieces of, of information that we could gather about students and building, um, goals, what would be a year's growth in a year's time for this student when they started at this level? What is that growth goal we're looking for? So, teachers have very individualized student learning goals for each student that they are now tracking and they're going to be doing progress monitoring on throughout the year to see how that growth is happening. Um, and they're building action plans and communicating about those action plans during, at their PLC meetings to ask each other, how's it going? What data do you have? Are, are we moving the needle? Are we getting the growth we want? And I'm just really excited about that because our focus on growth is what we're, what we're really, um, excited about for all of our students. So, um, they're analyzing that academic data very thoroughly and continuing those professional conversations. Uh, my next item has to do with our calm corner success. So, not only do we care about our, our students' academic growth, but we care about their ability to regulate their emotions. How are, how are they doing so that they can have the stamina to get through each day? And the calm corners that have been installed in our classrooms have been quite successful, even to the point where we had a parent share with a teacher, I heard about those calm corners, I built a calm corner in our house, because we needed to do that at home, too. And so, that's, that's really exciting and I, and I'm really proud of our students realizing that they need, I need, I need to go to the calm corner. Just, just, just to have a little break to get, to get my emotions in track. And what I love is that students are staying in the classroom and we want them in the classroom because that's where the learning is happening. So, that's been awesome. You've heard a lot about our focus on safety, not only with the visitors, um, coming to second grade, the ones that we went to the, the draw amphitheater with, but as our, um, with our, with our Ramsey officers. But we've also been just in drill season. We've done so, uh, three evacuation drills, we've done, um, a hold drill, we've done a lockdown drill. So, we'll, we'll definitely meet the state requirements. But, but we're also focusing in with students early on that safety is number one at PACT. That, that, that is, there, there, there's no, um, you know, we, we have, we have, our standard is high. And, and the students have been doing a great job at taking these drills seriously and understanding the importance of them. So, um, we'll keep, we'll keep going to, to follow the standard response protocols that we learned about at Workshop Week and continue those, those further. Um, something that I started this, this month is some, uh, an initiative called the Principal Good News Phone Call of the Day. And I now look forward to three o'clock on my calendar more than I ever have, because at three o'clock, I go to a classroom teacher's, uh, room. And they have nominated someone who is deserving of a good news phone call from the principal. And I collect that student as we walk to my office. I get to tell them why we're going to my office and we get to talk about the good news that their teacher shared with me. And we're gonna go call mom or dad or whoever's on our infinite campus list to call. And the students so far that I've worked with are just beaming, they are so proud to make this phone call in my office with me. Um, I get to read what the teacher said about them and the, have kind of engaged in that interaction on the phone with the parent and the student. And it's just a true joy to celebrate that how, the, the good news of our school, the good news of our students. And then I end the time by taking a photo of them, uh, Ms. Traut made some signs for them to hold in the photo and I email those to the family, uh, and the families. And so far, it's just been, you know, such, such a joy. That, we all know what encouragement and affirmation does, uh, in the lives of, of our students, our families, in our own lives. And so, um, I'm really excited to have the intentional with that and keep that going. Uh, something fun, I like to end with something fun in my reports. So, speaking of shout-outs to our students, we also do formal shout-outs to staff at our elementary staff meetings. So, I have a way that staff members can nominate each other and we share those at our staff meetings. We give shout-outs, we, we read them out loud, um, we celebrate each other. And we actually, this year, I'm giving out an awesome aw-award for one of the shout-outs that, that get, gets drawn and that the person gets to have a little awesome plaque on their desk for the, for that week or that, those couple of weeks until the next staff meeting. So, um, I really enjoy that. But this year, we've also started doing a family partnership shout-out moment in, during the staff meeting, where not only are we telling each other the good news of the things that are happening behind the scenes with each other, but I'm giving staff an opportunity to share, what are the, what are the shout-outs of those moments of, of, um, the moments you're proud of, of those partnership moments with families? And I have loved seeing staff all of a sudden come alive, get out their phones, share emails, share examples of communication that's happened between parents and teachers and in ways that it's so obvious that, that the, the partnership with families, the way that we wanna connect with families, um, is making a difference for the children and their, their experience at PACT. So, I wanna continue to inspire our staff to not only be excited about what's happening with their students, what's happening with each other as colleagues, but also what's happening with our partnerships with families, because that's what PACT is, is about, is, is that family partnership. So, speaking of, we're, you know, families, tomorrow is my principal perk up, my first time to meet with families over coffee to see who can come and what questions they bring. I always wanna be a transparent, um, principal at our school and answer any questions that our community has and, you know, some of the hard topics, some of the fun topics, whatever comes up. Just be really real and, and honest about what's going on at PACT. So, I'm looking forward to tomorrow morning, having some coffee with parents. So, that's my report. Any questions? It's really fun. I always have to say, I'm calling about a good thing. It's a good thing that I'm calling, yeah. Right, right.
All right, moving on to Secondary.
All right.
Okay, so some exciting news for us. Um, when we took a look at FastBridge scores and we, Ms. Wyden will have more longitudinal data, but when we looked from fall, from spring of last year to fall of this year, um, there's value for us at the secondary in talking about it because so much of it last year was just click, click, click through. And so we really made a point, we had kinda talked about this at the beginning of the year. We're really impressing upon the kids the importance of doing their very best. Um, and just talking through standardized testing and how it will impact them in the long run. And so, um, for us, that's what this data reflects is that our scores are really encouraging for us, especially in reading. Um, with some grades showing growth of up to twelve percent. And so that's not to say between spring of last year and fall of this year, they grew twelve percent. I think that's to say, again, it shows us that we believe that we have scores that are accurate. So we know our students are ready to learn. Um, we're seeing a lot less, as we look at intervention in which students need extra support, we're seeing a lot less ones and threes, which for us oftentimes generally will indicate that students are just clicking through. Um, so that's huge. So in five of seven grade levels, we saw a significant improvement. Um, so we're just really excited that the students are taking it more seriously. And so again, as we talk about our district wise, um, SLGs, we have confidence now that we have right sized the goal for each student and the growth that we would like to see from them. So, it's a big deal for us. I'm really excited. Uh, we had great turnout for conferences this year. So Parent Square, we had teachers all send out um, information on conferences. And so it's true that some parents are pretty inundated, those at the secondary with the number of requests. But I will tell you that last year, um, so on Tuesdays we do by invite, um, until parents can schedule a meeting. Thursdays it's more arena style and so there are tables set up in the gym and the cafeteria and in the hallways. Um, and parents can just kinda drop in and talk to, talk to teachers. And last year we had one teacher that was almost completely full for meetings and this year nearly every single teacher had every slot full. Um, for the sake of parents, I don't think that we're gonna do our invites quite the same way in the spring, even though they're really effective. Um, but just really excited at the turnout that we had because at the secondary, just generally it's not as high um, at the elementary. And so I think in the spring we're gonna look at, cause really now we hit the point where more parents wanted to schedule conferences than we had time for. Um, so just looking at a way in the spring to kinda prioritize the students who are struggling first and then to open up more slots at those meeting times. Um, but still to keep that arena style for Thursdays. So, good news for us. Um, and again, so thankful for PTO. I know the staff was really excited to have Texas Roadhouse and um, to have some other great things to eat. So, it was awesome. Uh, okay, so school pride, we had our first home varsity football game at Panther Stadium. It was major, staff and student turnout was great. Um, we had so many more people than the stands could hold, so now we just need more stands. Um, we got to cheer on the football players, the Pantherets did a great job at their performance. They've continued to perform for us for home games, which has been really fun. Um, this snack shack, so the PTO has a new snack shack now out at Panther Stadium, so that's serving all of the things we have out at Panther Stadium, so that right now soccer and football, um, and the Pantherets. And so the line was incredibly long, which is a good thing. Sometimes demand is important and so it was awesome just to see everyone outside enjoying themselves. We had a huge crowd. Um, so we're excited for more nights under the lights. Uh, we actually just had a big win on Saturday, so it was a day game, but we ended at thirty-two to six and they ended at halftime. Just due to student injuries, but that was awesome. So we're two, two right now. So, excited to move forward. And then major breaking news right now, our boys varsity soccer just clinched the title for NCAA conference champions today. So, super proud of them. From the beginning of the season, they were like, this is our year, we're gonna do it. And so, they did it. And so now, we just get to go on and win more. Um, so very proud of them, so if you see any of them around. Uh, hiring updates for us, so we made our final hire of the year. Um, we hired a behavior para, his name is Mark Suggs. Um, with more students on campus this year, it's been really nice to have just another set of hands to help support those students. So, Mr. Suggs has over twenty years of experience working with students. Um, and he's already been an asset on our secondary campus. And then another exciting thing, um, through the same doctoral program that a few of us have been through, we have Dr. Joel Olson, so he's finished with his doctorate, but he is working on his principal hours. And so, um, he started spending some time with me over the summer working on our online program. And now he gets to be with us for quite a, quite a long time, um, this fall and probably into the spring as well. And so, again, it's really, it's fun to be able to um, kind of walk through things with people for the first time and being a principal and talk about the decisions that we make. Um, but also, he's been in education for a really long time, he has a lot of wisdom. And so, we're just excited to give him some projects and put him to work on campus. So, I think, not so secretly, even though this is being recorded, he has been at other schools so far and I won't say their names so they're not embarrassed, but he definitely likes PACT the best. And so he's chosen to spend the majority of his time with us. Not that we're competitive. Um, and then for professional development, so this year for the first time, um, we already have department PLCs, but just as we looked at our student learning goals, um, and determining how we wanted to meet those, we now have PLCs by grade level. And so for teachers who are very used to being siloed in their departments, it's, it's a big lift to ask them to work cross-curricularly with other teachers. Um, and they did a really, really good job. We are already seeing some of the action steps at play. Um, we have a social studies teacher who, in addition to looking at FastBridge data, looked at common lit data from the beginning of the year and is now, um, having leveled readers in his class, so students are reading at the right level for them for their growth. Um, and so we're just really excited for our staff and their willingness to try something new. We ask kids to try something new all the time and I think as adults, we forget how tough it is um, to do something different, like even when someone sits in our preferred seat that we're used to sitting in, it's hard for us. Um, so it's been really exciting to watch them, hearing some of the feedback from our built team was that people are really excited. Um, and they're excited to learn from each other in ways that they haven't before, just because it's not something that has been extended to them previously. So, we've also started our teacher observations and we're really encouraged by the good work that we're seeing. And that's what I have for you. Yeah, go Panthers! Hello, last. Um, alright, so, things are settling in in September. Um, talking a little bit about our marketing, um, our approach has always been a communication centered market, marketing, um, plan that just focuses on our community and building and sharing and celebrating who we are and what we uh, believe in and what our values are. And so, keeping um, that is the focus where um, things are really coming together with Parent Square as far as, and the website as far as all of those pieces fitting together and getting uh, the information out, so we're pretty excited about that. Um, September, our digital interactions on Facebook reached a hundred and two thousand views uh, with a reach of eleven thousand five hundred, with Instagram at ninety-three thousand and a reach of twenty-five hundred. So that's kind of a fun, that's a great start to the new school year. And to date, our website has had over two hundred and ninety-seven thousand hits. Most of them are probably me. Logging in every day. But, no, that's a, that's a pretty good number and I did go out and look at our Google um, business and we're getting some like great outside um, hits as well, so, um, we're just gonna keep that up. Um, enrollment remains strong across K nine, as you've already heard tonight. We do have some uh, open seats in ten through twelve uh, with immediate openings. And we kind of average, depending on the day, it does change almost every uh, three days, about fourteen hundred and sixty students given on, um, on any given day. Um, we currently have seven hundred and twenty-four students on our waitlist for this year. Um, and we only had ten students withdraw across K twelve in September, some of which, um, a few just didn't come to school this year. Um, they'd made other plans and didn't let us know, so that always happens um, as we begin the school year, so not anything concerning there. Um, the twenty-six, twenty-seven enrollment lottery opened on September first and keeps going until November first. And as of today, there are four hundred and eighty-five applicants on that waitlist for a hundred and twenty-eight available spots. So, we're doing it. Um, but we look forward, we know that we want to build that up and so we're gonna start uh, doing a little uh, paid sponsorships to build up the high school. Um, especially as we start looking at online school, we want to, we know that there'll be current students who will want to shift and we want to build that out a little bit, so you might see some of that kinda stuff kinda coming out. Um, the new website is, I would, I'm just guessing it's about eighty percent complete. Um, right now I'm focusing on the secondary campus as we focus on secondary enrollment, um, to make sure that everything is getting buttoned up. Most of the work remaining um, involves academic content, so that, and making things look pretty, so we're working on that. What, I don't know who we is, it's a mouse in my pocket, it's me. Um, but the team is providing me content, so, um, it's, it's fun to start seeing it all kinda getting finalized. Um, moving to communication with Parent Square, fifty-eight percent of our students are registered, um, that's secondary students, um, for Student Square. And it's, they are actively using it, even though they say they're not, they really are. Um, and seventy-eight percent of parents are registered and actively using it. Even if they don't register, they still get all email announcements and if we were to do an urgent alert, they would still get a um, a notification on their phone, so, um, it's just, they get to do a lot more things when they register their account. Um, I'm working on the district crisis communication plan that a lot, that follows the um, standard response protocol that was shared with us and that we've been adopting this year. Um, working on all the messaging frameworks so that I can build them into Parent Square and have them ready at a fingertip in the event of an emergency. Um, and we are doing advanced notifications to parents about safety drills this year to let them know what we are doing in the coming, in that week and giving them a little education on what that means and just as a way to promote transparency and preparedness. And so I, I haven't heard anything good or anything bad, so I'm sure, I, there's some appreciations on the post, so there you go. Um, and then just, I'm gonna kinda echo, um, we had the Booster Club and the PACT, Panther's PTO ran their annual back to school bash, which was super fun. Um, it did rain and it put a little vapor on the attendance, but um, since uh, things resold, they made five thousand dollars um, to support our activities, so that was awesome. And then our uh, team, admin team uh, represented PACT at the Ramsey Happy Days on September se- sixth with a booth and Sean and I were out there first in the sunshine and the beautiful and then, we set up the tent. And then the rest of the day was a bit of a tornado and, and yeah, sorry. Okay, then it got, and then it got sunny again, so uh, yeah.
The reason I got to lower the tent about a half a dozen times is to try to prevent it from blowing away.
Before it would, yeah, it would fly, so that was great. And the dance team performed and not just our older kids, but our um, elementary dance club and they were absolutely precious. They were, I, in my opinion, they were the hit of the parade. They were amazing and they actually, okay, they looked better than a local high school that had their prom out there. But I'm just saying, for sure, for sure. They were adorable and so, um, yeah, that's the end of my report, if you have any questions.
Any questions yet?
I have a, a question, maybe comment. Um, I'll say I'm asking it for my wife because I've had to help her. With all of our tools that we have, is there any way to help the teachers with scheduling for volunteers in the classroom? Right now, and I just, maybe we have it already?
Yep.
Uh, I, I came to the elementary, did lunch with my girls and I had to go take a picture of the calendar outside the door. And then my wife has to text back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, figure out with the teacher. Is there some way that we can help the teacher, a calendar, online, parents can look at it, sign up? They just never share their name, but uh, just a thought to have.
That would be a building thing. Yeah.
Instead of having a calendar or, can we have something online where they can?
That's gonna start brainstorming, how can we help make it a more fluid type of process for parents to volunteer versus?
Well, you're talking about TAs in the classroom, right?
If I wasn't actually there for lunch, I wouldn't have been able to look at the calendar on the wall and tell my wife what things were open. So is there a way to do that calendar to volunteer electronically?
Yeah, different teachers use their, 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 their parent volunteer to, to, so, but, but just in general, how to assist teachers?
Just in general, how can we do that to help the teachers and the communication back and forth for them that wanna come in and volunteer?
Yeah, I think that would be, well, the building level deciding what they wanna do and then at the classroom level.
Yes.
Adding that to their weekly newsletter with, there can be links to signing up as volunteers or whatever they need. Definitely. You've got that, you're writing that down?
I'm not.
Okay.
Anything else? Alright, thanks for the report.
Yep.
On to item number nine, other board actions, uh, no board report for me, anything from any other board members? Mr. Lucas? Yes, keep it going.
We've been waiting.
For score. Uh, Mr. Lucas?
Uh, my more general comment, I'm not gonna take fifteen minutes. Uh, I'm just sitting here tonight and I, I have been the last year, but uh, I, I want to thank everybody at PACT. Board, teachers, staff, students, everything. I was like, I sit here tonight proud, the reports that we had, our students uh, doing their report out and just seeing the direction that we're going. Um, the, the change over the last year, two years, direction that we're going, um, proud. So just wanted to share that.
Awesome, thank you. Fifteen minutes?
Nope.
Alright, uh, nothing else? If not, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Alright. Second one's okay. Any further discussion? If not, all does a favor signify by saying aye. Uh, anyone opposed say aye, anyone saying so much carries or adjourned.
Not too bad.
Not too bad.
That's a solid one.